Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to God. Thank you.
Okay, agenda review, anything to add Kathy? Okay, no agenda review. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our February 17th board meeting. It's been moved by Tim, seconded by Wendy. Okay, any errors, corrections, omissions? Okay, hearing none, take a roll call vote. Krista? Julianne? I'm staying. Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? And Chev O'Ty, thank you. Next item is the approval of the manifest for tonight. The manifest for accounts payable, $1,299,765.98. Payroll is $2,997,256.39. For a total manifest being signed of $3,397,022.37. Moved by Dr. Jim. Seconded by Tim. Okay, all those in favor, roll call. Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? And Chev O'Ty, as well. Thank you. Public input. Opportunity for you to address the board. And again, state your name and your town that you're from. And please limit your comments to about five minutes if possible. Okay, seeing none at this moment, we'll move on with the meeting then. First items on the superintendent's report.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance through the flag, United States of America, through the republic, hands, God.
Thank you. Okay, agenda review, anything to add Kathy? Okay, no agenda review. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our February 17th board meeting. It's been moved by Tim, seconded by Wendy. Okay, any errors or corrections or omissions? Okay, hearing none, take a roll call vote. Krista? Julianne? I'm staying. Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? And Chair Votai, thank you. Next item is the approval of the manifest for tonight. The manifest for accounts payable, $1,299,765.98. And payroll is $2,097,256.39. For a total manifest being signed of $3,397,022.37. Moved by Dr. Jim. Seconded by Tim. Okay, all those in favor, roll call. Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? And Chair Votai as well? Thank you. Public input. Opportunity for you to address the board. And again, state your name and your town that you're from. And please limit your comments to about five minutes if possible. Okay, seeing none at this moment, we'll move on with the meeting then. First items on the superintendent's report.
Testing, oh, here we go, great. All right. So the first thing I'm going to start out with is a COVID update. The numbers continue to decline across the state and are lower than they've been in months, which is great news. Since the board's last meeting, the schools have gone into high gear to prepare for having 100% of our in-person students in school full-time. So each school has worked to ensure the maximum amount of distancing between students. Our smaller schools will be able to manage six-foot distancing in all the classrooms. In our larger schools, students will be three, four, or five feet apart, depending on the size of the classroom and the number of students in the class. All the mitigation strategies that we have been practicing since the opening of school will be in effect. These include, but are not limited to, masking, COVID-19 screenings, hand washing, sanitizing, social distancing, although as I mentioned, some areas will be three feet rather than six feet, contact tracing, quarantining, plastic barriers, limiting visitors, continuing sanitation practices, and grouping students when possible. I just wanted to say a word about contact tracing. We'll still be implementing the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Service guidance, which defines close contact as six feet for 10 minutes or greater cumulative during the infectious period. So with three-foot distancing, our contact tracing is likely to involve more students. But I'm hopeful that as the virus subsides, we're going to see few cases in the school anyway. As far as transportation, parents who are able to transport their children will still going to ask parents to do that so that we can have the maximum amount of space on the buses. Seats will be marked, and Mary Ann, our transportation director, has figured out how many students are going to be on each bus, and will put them as far apart as possible in assigned seats with marking. Food service, lunches in terms of distancing is probably our biggest challenge, but I do want to applaud the administrators for all the creative solutions that they've put into place to get everyone six feet apart during lunches with plastic dividers. Children will have six feet apart whether they're in the classroom or the cafeteria. A couple of schools who are able to keep the students six feet apart in the classroom will be kept in their group or pod in the classrooms. The important factor is not where they're eating, but that they be the six feet apart. And for those of you listening who are school staff, that is a change. When we didn't think that we had elementary schools, or I should say, when I didn't think I had elementary schools that could honor the six-foot distancing in the classroom, lunches were going to be in the cafeteria. But we do have some situations where we don't have to group classrooms together, and we can have that six-foot distancing in the classroom. So. Matt, and about food service, the other thing I want to mention is, the students who, and families who are remote, will still have the opportunity to pick up the lunches on Wednesdays, the breakfasts and lunches, so that won't stop. The remote families will still receive their food. What else did I want to mention about food service? Oh, the other thing is, the lunches, the way they're being served, they're all, they're put together and they're put in packages, so we're going to keep that up. There won't be a lunch line and serving just yet. That will come with time, you know, once we get in and once we see everything get closer back to normal. But for now, the kinds of lunches that they've been having and breakfasts that they've been having throughout this year will continue for a while. The mask breaks, that was another thing that we had to look at carefully. Each school will have its own procedure for mask breaks. The length and the frequency of the mask breaks, though, will be dependent on the age of the students and circumstances within each school, such as the space available and access to the outdoors. But the mask break should only occur if the students are six feet or more apart and for fewer than 10 minutes. So when in the classrooms, when there's less than six-foot spacing, and I have to say, this idea didn't come from me, it came from our administrators, and it's a good idea, the mask breaks will occur on a schedule with every other row taking the mask break together. So those who have the masks off will be more than six feet apart. I thought that was a very good solution. Deep cleaning Wednesdays are the other things that I've had some questions about. The cleaning that's been done on Wednesdays has been beyond the routine sanitation procedures. It's been things like carpet cleaning and things that we normally do at other times during the year. It hasn't been that we have ramped up the sanitation on Wednesdays. The sanitation has been going on every day. And according to the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services, public and private spaces should be routinely cleaned, including all frequently touched surfaces such as desks, tables, chairs, and doorknobs. No additional disinfection beyond routine cleaning is recommended at this time. We've learned a lot about the coronavirus through this year, and we've learned that the virus does not survive very long on surfaces. So there's very low risk of transmission from a surface. And, you know, of course, with that being said, I still think it's important to sanitize everything and to make sure hands are washed, but I think with that additional knowledge, it just makes, I think people, I hope, will feel a little bit more comfortable. We also have some wonderful news that will make it safer for everyone to be back. The district will be holding a vaccination administration clinic in coordination with the Carroll County Public Health Coordinator. Initially, it was going to be March 17th, 22nd, and 23rd. And at 5:00 tonight, Victoria called me to say that she can't do the 17th, but that's still good news because she can do everyone. With the numbers that we have right now, everyone can be done on the 22nd and the 23rd. This will be held at the high school, in the cafeteria, and there'll be a separate space for 15-minute, for the 15-minute observation period, which occurs after the vaccinations. Our nurses have volunteered to administer the vaccine, and our high school staff have a plan for setting up the space. And right now, I think we have 312 members signed up. We may have a little bit more by now. That's when I last checked, and we did have to open up the window because some staff members missed the first window. So, the one thing that we have left to get finished before opening are the revisions to our current memorandum of understanding with GUEA. But I'm sure that we can get that accomplished before it's time to open. I'm very optimistic. So that's what I have for COVID.
Here we go. So what I'd like to discuss tonight is a reopening plan. As you know, at our last meeting, we had a target date of the 22nd. And again, that was a target date, it wasn't anything in stone. With the last vaccinations being given on the 23rd, the last of the first shots, it's recommended that we wait 10 days after that to have the vaccine stay full effect for that first shot. That would put us into April 3rd, which is a Saturday. My recommendation then would be that we would have full in-house for the current, in-school students, effective Monday, April 5th. The fact that this is the first shot of two is not a concern. We've heard from Dr. Noble and Dr. Bernazian at the hospital that we shouldn't be concerned. The first shot is very effective, especially after the 10-day wait period. The second shot is, even though they don't call it a booster, is like a booster shot to increase the effectiveness of the vaccine being given. We're not getting the one-shot Johnson &amp; Johnson. It's either, I'm not sure if it's the Pfizer or the Moderna, that we're getting, it will be a two-shot process. But my recommendation is that we look at April 5th as the full-in day. But for those remote students, I want to, you know, reiterate that the remote option, if you're in full remote now, is not going away until the end of the school year. So if you're in full remote option, you can stay there. But for all those students that are Cohort A or Cohort B, we'd like full in-school as of April 5th. That's my recommendation. Comments from the board? Yes?
My first, well, my question is, is the district doing anything to facilitate the second shot?
Yeah, there'll be a schedule, after your first shot, you'll have the schedule for the second shot at that time.
I know, but I'm talking about the district facilitating it like they did for the first shot.
I can answer that. When people come to get their first shot, they're going to go home with the date and the name of the type of vaccination they got, and they're going to have the second date on that card. So, and I anticipate, it's, I, the, when I was talking with the coordinator tonight, she was in her car, so we really couldn't talk about the follow-up date, but I did tell her that I wanted to discuss that with her tomorrow so that we can know what those follow-up dates will be.
The question is, is the school district going to do it?
Yes, we're going to do it.
Yeah, the school district will provide the second shot, the same.
That's what I wanted to know, if we were going to house it and facilitate it.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the only way to really get it done quickly.
Yep. Okay, any other comments? Jim?
Testing, here we go. Okay. Well, I just wanted to say this is all great news. You know, it's been a year, we've been playing along with every twist and turn that this pandemic has sent to us. I have to say, I was feeling a little anxiety that we might, might jump the gun and get staff and students and teachers in before we had a chance for vaccination. And thank God, now we, now we have a schedule. All great news. So I just want to say I'm very happy and supportive of this plan. As I understand it, even when we get vaccinated, there's still all these protection protocols we need to follow, face masks and all of that, and assuming that that will continue to be true.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else? Charlene?
It says it's on, okay, everybody can hear me. One concern I still have is the spacing in the classrooms. And I think it's exciting news that we are going to be able to have all of our staff at least have the first shot, which, it's my understanding, the first shot provides at least 65% protection, and then the second, then the booster raises that to 95%. And my question is, what specific schools or, you know, which schools in the district are we going to have difficulty maintaining the six-foot social distancing? And is there a way to, say, for example, if it's at the high school or the middle school, would there be a way to maybe try to schedule some classes in a larger venue, maybe in the gym or someplace where they can spread out a little bit more? And is, I mean, is there a concern that we're not providing equity to all the students if we have some of them at only three or four feet social distancing and have others at six feet?
So the middle school, the high school, Osipie, Carpenter, and to some extent Crescent Lake, all cannot provide the six-foot distancing in all their classrooms. They can provide it in some of their classrooms, in every building, but not in all. In terms of the spacing between the students, that's something that we have talked about extensively and extensively with the two local physicians. And we've done really well in terms of not, not being transmissible inside school. And they really tell us that at this point, with the community transmission coming down, vaccinations going up, that this really is the time to come back, and that we should not be overly worried about that. And I would also add that the administrators have looked at every single nook and cranny in their buildings to get students as far apart as possible.
Anyone else? Wendy?
I first want to, okay, sorry. I just would like to say that I'm in support of going to school on March 22nd. There's no other workforce that has been out of work requiring the vaccine to go back to work, so I support the March 22nd start date.
Thank you. Do I hear any other comments? If not, I entertain a motion either for the 22nd or April 5th, or Jim?
The switch on. I move that we set April, was it 5th? April 5th as the start date to go back to full in-class learning.
Okay, motion made by Jim Pittman to go back on the 5th. Charlene seconded the, okay, any other discussion? This would be a full five-day in for those students currently in the cohort, or I guess there might be some students that might want to come back in that have been remote, I'm not sure. Is there?
There are some. As time has gone on, we've seen an increase, and we have about 39 students that will be coming back from remote. We have a couple that will be going the other way, but it does look like we have more that will be coming in from remote.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote. All those in favor of full five-day in-school beginning April 5th? Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? Chair Votai, eight to one. We full in as of April 5th at this point. Please note, obviously, if the numbers spike between now and then, we'd have to revisit it, but I don't, certainly don't anticipate that with the vaccines being given on a regular basis now and all the safety precautions still in place. I think we're in very good shape for April 5th. Yes, Jim?
I guess I should ask this previously, but I'm going to assume if something happens with the vaccine schedule, it would get delayed by a week or something, we would adjust accordingly?
Yeah, we, if, if something happens between now and then, we'll certainly call a special or emergency board meeting, whatever we need to do to decide a plan of action.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. April 5th is the day. Okay, moving on.
The next item is the Wood Estate. For several years now, we've had a camp invention program, which is a science, technology, engineering, and math inquiry-based program in the summertime. It's a week-long program, and we would be anticipating this summer having 35 students at three sites. It's really a great program, and the kids really love it. We hope that most students will participate in person, but there's also a remote option if we have a few students that want to participate that way. And each year, we request funds from the Wood Estate to keep the cost down for parents. It costs about $140 per pupil in order to do this for each student, but in order to keep the cost down to $50, we supplement it with some fundraising and also with the Wood Estate trust. So that's what the request is in your pocket, and transportation would be provided by the district as it always is.
Any questions on the Wood Estate request? I think the camp invention's been tremendous for the last five years probably, and it's available in Osipie-Effingham, Tufton Borough, and New Durham. It's not necessarily available, needed here in Wolfborough because there's a private donor that takes care of the funding for the Wolfborough schools. Okay, so we'll need a motion to request the funds from the Wood Estate as outlined in the application. A move by Dr. Jim. Second by Dana. Okay, all those in favor of requesting the money from the Wood Estate as outlined in today's presentation, signally saying aye. Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? And chair votes aye as well. Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you. The next item is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And as you'll recall, we discussed this last month. The survey monitors six categories of priority. Health risk behaviors among youth and, and young adults, including behaviors that contribute to unintentional injuries and violence. And these are tobacco use, alcohol and other drug use, sexual behaviors and sexually transmitted diseases, unhealthy dietary behaviors, and physical activity are all surveyed. Two things have happened since this was first discussed. I was notified that the YRBS administration has been moved from the spring to the fall. When you were discussing it last time, we were talking about a spring administration, but it is going to be postponed until the fall. And then the other thing is, you can see in your packet, that Bob Batson and team Wolfborough are asking for reconsideration. So, the, the other thing I would add is, someone had asked when we discussed this last time whether there was an online option, and I thought maybe there was. Well, the online option's not quite ready, ready yet. They are looking at doing a web-based option, but right now, it's all pencil and paper. So, whether that will be ready for the fall or not, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I, I think it's an important source of information for us. I, and I don't mind reconsidering doing the program in the fall, but I'd like to see where our students are in the fall and how things are playing out in the fall before we commit to it. So, if, if we want to reconsider not doing it at all as the, as the motion, that we would consider doing it in the fall based on, you know, where our students are and where we are with the, you know, pandemic is at that point in time, I'd be in favor of that. I, I don't, at this point, yeah, I don't think we should commit to it until we really know where we are in the fall. You want to make that motion? Okay. Okay, so, so we'll reconsider not doing it to, to, to potentially doing it in the fall based on where our students are at that point in time. Okay, so we have moved and seconded to, to reconsider issuing the, or, or holding the, the testing in the fall based on our, our students' progress, I guess, maybe, if, if that's the proper way to say it. Okay? Okay. All those in favor? Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? Chair votes aye as well. Okay, great. Thank you.
Jack?
Yes?
If I could just comment, I see this, we have these attachments here. I know this is tabled, but just call attention for the board members. There's this, there's this 13 deadly facts about marijuana. Really looks like something out of Reefer Madness. And it's, I, and I, I know it seems, you know, sort of humorous, but I, I think that these, these sort of presentations are counterproductive if we want to get kids to understand where drugs and so on figure in. Because I know when I was in high school and saw this sort of thing, it, it just made me dismiss the whole thing about, yeah, drug, you know, drugs are, are, are not bad because this is ridiculous. So, I, I just want to observe that I have a problem with this particular thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Moving on then.
All right. Well, the next, the next item is really great news. We've been awarded a grant from the New Hampshire Department of Education to help us with social, emotional learning for our students. And I think we all probably feel that this could not have come at a better time because we know our students have really been suffering with, through the pandemic and are going to need a lot of social and emotional attention. So, the, the grant will help students re, we know, we, we also know we need to help students regain progress in academics this coming year, but the pandemic has taken a toll on children who need emotional support. The grant funds a position for, for a coordinator to work with all the schools on mental health and substance misuse and intervention. The main goal would be to assist the district in implementing what is called multi-tiered systems of support. And I know that you've all heard that word before because we've talked about response to intervention, for example, is a multi-tiered system of support. This is not new to the district. And it's a process that's in all of our schools, but it's going to be wonderful to be able to move this forward with this additional person and with money for materials and professional development. It will help us purchase the SEL toolkits that I, I think you've all heard about, that we have in some of our schools, but not all, and help us build the bridge from our elementary schools to our middle school with the toolkits, toolkit strategies. And there are things that we would like to implement at the high school as well. So, this position would act as a liaison with families and communities. And you have to use the money this way. You can't, they're, they're giving us so much money, but as part of that grant, you have to, you have to have a liaison. And that liaison will also be working with families and commu, and community organizations. So, right now, the initial amount that we have is $100,000, but it's a grant that will be open for two years. And as we have needs and as we set additional goals, there'll be additional money available to us. So, it's really a fabulous opportunity, and I'm, I'm really pleased that we've been awarded the money and the opportunity to move this forward.
Okay.
Apply to the, for the grant?
We did, yeah. It was a very simple application. Yeah.
And it, are, or is it, are we going, is it going to be a, a current employee or a new addition to staff?
No, well, we'll be, we'll be posting, if, if you all feel good about this and approve it, we'll be posting this tomorrow.
Okay.
And then we'll see who applies.
Do they have to have any sort of cert now, you know, like a master's in social work?
No, it's not so much credentials, but it should be somebody who's worked in the mental health field, whether it be somebody with a behavioral.
I didn't know if the grant tied, tied the education.
Well, it's not, it's not an in-school position per se. It's really cross-schools and into the community. So, it could be a counseling background, it could be a psychology background, social work. So, it's, it's, you know, it's flexible that way.
Okay, so what we'll need is a, a motion to accept the grant money? Moved by Charlene? Seconded by Wendy? Okay. All those in favor of accepting the grant money? Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? And chair votes aye. I didn't, I didn't think anybody would vote against accepting the grant money, so, thank you. Okay.
All right. Next item is school board reorganization and school board meeting schedule. With the Effingham Selectmen's decision to delay their voting until May and the vote occurring in all the other towns tomorrow, we have an unusual situation. The moderators are required to count their votes and to report them out right after the election. But we won't know the final decision on some things because Effingham's votes won't be counted until they have their election, which I believe is on May 11th. So, in the meantime, we're really unable to seat any new members of the board. And I did, after talking with, with some of you, I did ask Julianne if she would continue on until we have a new person to represent New Durham, and she said yes, she would, so.
Thank you, Julianne. Appreciate that.
So, she's a very busy lady, so we're, we're very appreciative, Julianne. And then the last piece of this, and is the re, so the reorganization won't happen at least until June because we can't reorganize in May. I think our first meeting is before then, so it would be June or the next meeting after June, so. And then, the next thing is the board meeting schedule and what we want to do for the board me, or what you want to do for the board meetings for the remainder of the year. Our next board meeting would have been, if we were in a normal schedule, would have been at Crescent Lake School. That still provides us with a pretty good opportunity for social distancing. We've been there for a few advisory meetings, or Jack has, and, and Heather has, for advisory meetings. And the way that it's set up, I think we can, unless we have an awfully large crowd, I think we can set it up so that it provides the distancing, if you wanted to do that, to try to get back into a, our usual routine.
That's it, that's the, the first, you know, it's the first day back in full, full school, so I don't know if it, you know, it's nice to get back into the individual buildings. We certainly wouldn't expect anything from the principal or students at that meeting, I wouldn't think.
Right. Yeah.
Because that's their first full day back into full five-day-a-week classes. I'm certainly not opposed to going to Crescent Lake or any of the other buildings. The, that's one meeting. The following meeting for May is normally our joint board meeting, which I don't know if we're holding or not this year.
Well, I, I'd like an opportunity to talk with Bruce about that because even if we can't hold, the, hold it the way we usually hold it, we might be able to do something else. But, so, I, I'll come back with, with some thoughts on that for next time.
Okay. And, and the, and the June meeting is usually the retirement reception meeting, which it would be nice if we could still hold that in person this year, even if we're doing some social distancing.
And, you know, I think if everyone is vaccinated and things continue to go in the right direction in June, I don't see why we couldn't do that.
Charlene?
This is just for housekeeping. On the, under the April 5th meeting, we should strike board reorganization and move that down to June 7th because we won't be able to do board reorganization at that meeting. Correct?
At the April meeting? Yeah, correct. We, we won't be able to do the reorganization until the June meeting. Correct. Okay.
So, the, the last, is there anything else?
Yeah, do, so, I guess the que, the question is, where do we want to have our next meeting in April? Do we want to have it here? Do we want to have it at Crescent Lake? I think we can make Crescent Lake work. Even if we have some people in the audience, I think we can still make that work rather than tying up this space, but what do you think? Want to have it here? Okay.
Being the first day back, we, we don't need to go busting into Crescent Lake with everything else they're going to be dealing with.
Okay. Okay. It loo, it looks like consensus is to, to have the April meeting here then, and, and we'll work on the May joint meeting and what that might look like at that point. So, we'll keep the, the next meeting here then in April. Okay? Sounds good.
Right. And then the last thing as far as the superintendent's report before Jack talks about the School Boards Association is the legislative update. There, the legislation around schools this year is unbelievable. It's just one bill right after the other. Most of them are around school choice and vouchers. And, and I, I am concerned about some of them because there is one, for example, that SB 130, just the calculations. If the money that the bill is talking about goes where it's meant to go as a result of the bill, it'll cost the district, just now with the students we have that are homeschooled, a million and a half. And that doesn't count the students that are in public schools. So, I'm, I'm very concerned about that one. HB 455, I am also concerned about that one because that allows parents to enroll children in public schools of their choice. We have several students from other districts who, and there would be, that we charge tuition. And this would be without charging tuition, it would just be the adequacy money. So, I haven't done the math on this to figure out exactly what this would mean for our district, but it, it definitely means thousands of dollars. So, I'm concerned about that one too. And, and there are a number of them, so I'll just go down through them really quickly. There's one establishing a committee to, to study inequality, another requiring Universal Declaration of Human Rights to be placed in public schools, another requiring change, changing a pupil's school assignment because of a manifest educational hardship. And this would take that ability to make that decision away from the school board. So, that's another one that's of concern. Relative to the ability of a parent to enroll a child, oh, I already said that. Relative to private school that is approved as a tuition program, and I'm not familiar, familiar with that one yet. HB 182 is relative to the approval of coursework completed at other approved schools. This bill requires the principal or other administrator of a high school to grant credit for courses and programs completed at other approved schools. So, right now, schools have, and you as a school board, have the ability to make that decision about whether or not you feel something deserves a credit be granted based on the standards that the district has set, but that would no longer be the case. Relative to the apportionment of costs in cooperative school districts, this bill permits, and this one I've seen before, this must be the third time that it's come back. Relative to the apportionment of costs in cooperative school districts, this bill permits the apportionment formula for a cooperative school district to be subject to review every five years after an article to continue the current formula was passed. So, that's, that's renegotiating some things that are very, very difficult to get everyone to agree on every five years. So, we would probably have a constant negotiation. That was HB 152. HB 164 is relative to the Commission to Study School Funding. This bill deletes the requirement that the Commission to Study School Funding remain active until the General Court addresses its recommendations. And then HB 198, relative to an exception to the opportunity for a public education without discrimination. This bill accepts biological males by birth from the provision that no person may be excluded from participation in public schools as that provision that applies to participate, participation in all female athletes, athletics, excuse me. So, that one I know very little about. I haven't really done a lot of research to actually go and read the text on that one, so I don't have anything I can really offer there. So, those are the ones that, of all that's happening, seem to have popped to the surface. And that's it.
Thank you. The, the School Board Association has been very busy. At this time of the year, they, they have applications for school board of the year, which, you know, I'm not sure, usually there's some special programs that school boards do and, and are very proud to, to present that at the annual meetings. I'm not sure where that's going this year. School boards have been completely busy with their COVID process this year. So, I, I don't know if any, if there's going to be any applications there. They also have an application at this time of the year for scholarships. If there are seniors graduating this year from, that are in families for any school board members, you can apply for scholarships to the New Hampshire School Board Association. And there's an application online for that. And the other thing, they're, they're also setting up, you know, times for their training sessions for new board members and all that. I think they're, they're trying to do those fairly quickly this year. Now, unfortunately for us, I think some of these may be held prior to us actually knowing who our school board members who our school board members might be because of the Effingham vote. We may wind up having the new board member training prior to actually knowing who the board members might be. However, we'll just have to deal with that. And maybe we can get some extra training or a, an online training process for the new board members if that's a possibility. And they are working very hard. We do have a new liaison there with the, between the school board and the legislature. And they've been actively working on each one of these bills that Kathy has mentioned, trying to convince them that this attempt to destroy public education is not a wise thing to do. They keep fighting it. Hopefully they'll hear. And you also have the ability to go on and log on to the Department of, is it the? Trying to remember the site, but there's one for the House and one for the Senate that you can log on to the individual bills and you can voice, you can either testify when those bills are being heard or you can at least voice your, your support or opposition to an individual bill. Most of these bills are getting anywhere from five to one, four to one, five to one votes in opposition of the bills the way they're being presented. So I'm hoping that the legislature can actually listen to what's coming in from the public and say, maybe this isn't the smartest thing to do. Yes?
Question is, in some of the House bills that Kathy mentioned, and most of the House bills that Kathy mentioned, it seems like the emphasis is to take away local control. And we're living in a state which has always held that as such a dear part of who we are. I'm not understanding where it's coming from. So I obviously need to go back and do some more research on those. But does anybody have any, any insights?
Well, I think, you know, I think the effort, in my opinion anyway, the effort is a big, big push toward, you know, charter schools, private schools, anything that's not funded by the state. And basically the state is going to take money from the public schools and give it to the charter, the students or the families going to these charter schools and all that. It's an effort to, for this, I think for the state to shirk their duties to provide an adequate education. And unfortunately, the legislature, the way it is, we have a commissioner of education that homeschools, homeschools all his kids, has no clue about really the value of a public education. And he's sitting in that seat. We have a governor that is, you know, I think he's done a great job with the COVID process. But when it comes to education, he's anti-public education. So that's where a lot of this is coming from. And we have a legislation now that's leaning certainly one direction. And that, that direction, there's a group of people in that direction that are pushing for these charter schools and these, these bills out there to basically take money out of public education.
I think one of the things that concerns me is not just the taking the money away from public education. Some of these bills are going to hit the taxpayers really hard because it's, you know, we'll need a certain amount of money to function and it's money that we already have that will be taken away and we don't have any way to make that up. So the fiscal notes on these things are not correct and it's, it looks like it's not going to cost the public a lot of money, but it is. And so I'm just as worried about the taxpayers as I am about the education system.
Yeah, we, Kathy and I both participated in a Zoom conference for, I think, was that, that was House Bill 30? House Bill 20?
House Bill 20.
House Bill 20. And some of the numbers that they use, you know, we're only talking about, you know, between $4,000 and $8,000 per student that might leave your district. But you can save all that money because if you have 50 students, you can just save the money that it would cost you for 50 students. Well, you know, when you have a district with, you know, six elementary schools, middle school, high school, you take 50 students, divide them among all those schools, you can't get rid of only being one teacher. So how are you going to save money? And take those 50 students times an average of $5,000 if nothing else. That's $250,000 right there that comes right out of our, our pocket if 50 students went to a, you know, private school or a charter school. So Kathy's right, the numbers make absolutely no sense. Because people aren't looking, the people that are writing these bills aren't looking that way. If we take money away, then you can save that same money. Doesn't work that way. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, moving on to share report, I just have a couple of notifications that were sent out. Expressions of sympathy was sent to the family of Thomas Lovett on his passing. Also to Samantha Smith on the passing of her mother, to James Riley on the passing of his grandmother, and Christine Dearborn on the passing of her mother. And we sent get well wishes to Lloyd Wood. He was involved in one of those accidents here in Wolfboro way back when. And he also had some, some surgery and he's in rehab down in Portsmouth. And we sent him a get well card for his continued recovery. Okay, moving on to committee reports, academic affairs, Wendy. Speak right into the microphone.
Is it better?
Yep, thank you.
Odd one.
That's okay.
So, sorry, oh yeah, I can hear. Katie Hill and Brian Beaverstock came to the Academic Affairs Committee meeting this evening. And Katie discussed that we conducted the NWA testing over the winter and we had, for math, 128 students participate and reading 134. It looks as a math, we're at 50% rate. And this would be the students that were taught last year. It would be the ninth grade math and they're at the 50%. Them are at the ninth grade level for math and once, once again, it was 128 students. And the remote students due to proctoring and other issues are unable to participate in this testing. Katie was talking about how, you know, the state is unsure how they're able to administer these, the tests to online students due to the proctoring. I know that she said that they're working on a solution for that. They did also say that the 11th grade will be taking the SATs in April as well as the state's science assessment in June. And once again, the fully remote students would not be able to participate. However, State of New Hampshire has granted us waiver for that. She met with us previously regarding some assessments for K through eight regarding bringing the kids up to current level. She's still working on a plan for that. Based, as everyone knows, during the COVID, we have been able, we've had to decrease some social studies and science curriculum to make more robust reading and math. So we're looking to kind of, she's reevaluating that continuously with the staff and students. And once again, she's going to come back, I think, in a couple of months and give us an assessment on that. And I would say it was a positive feedback from Brian Beaverstock. He does the mood meter. And once again, we talked, Kathy talked about the social emotional grant that we're receiving and this does tie in nicely with that. They started this back in February and it's, it's all the students at Crescent Lake. They get a, an email or an invite asking them how they're feeling, if they're ready to learn every day. And they're able to provide that feedback directly to Mr. Beaverstock and the guidance counselor. And if a student is, you know, saying that they aren't ready to learn or feeling not up to their best, we do reach out to them individually and ask them if they need help and ask if they want to communicate with the guidance counselor. Again, I would say over the past couple of years, and I think Kathy alluded to that, we do have these social emotional toolbox kit in several of the schools. And Kathy did talk about the grant, would roll that out District Y, but I would say, there's a lot, oh darn, where is it? It's a very high percentage rate of the kids that are coming back and, that are, you know, participating in the survey and, thank you, Tim. It was, was it, as of today, we had 77.5% response rate from one cohort and 42.7% from the other and the fully remote at 32%. So the kids are really engaging in that. And it's nice that, you know, perhaps, you know, they're able to respond and be more self-aware with their emotions, you know, virtually than sometimes, you know, direct conversations with someone. So it was, I think for me, it was a really nice thing to know that, you know, the kids are actually participating in this remotely and, you know, they can still feel part of the group even if they aren't here. But I think it was a good moody. Have to bring forward Policy BEDH. It's for the public participation in the board meetings. And we had the first read last month, so I'd like to make a motion. Once again, there was very minimal change. We just included that it would maybe public input if needed. And then we just added, because we do travel to different areas, it would be a town. So I would like to make a motion for the approval of Policy BEDH as presented last month for approval.
A move by Wendy, seconded by Tim. Any other questions on Policy BEDH? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim? Tim Pittman? Charlene? Dana? Yeah, what's I as well, thank you.
That's all I have, Jack, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Julianne, anything for building grounds, building maintenance really. Okay, I have really nothing on finance. Get out and vote tomorrow, support our, our three warrant articles please. And human resources, nothing as well. Advanced planning, you can see our next school board meeting is April 5th. And it was decided that we will have it here as well. And public input.
Good evening, Jessica Williams. A couple of questions. March 26th, the state of emergency and the mask mandate are due to expire. So if they are allowed to expire, we don't renew that, the governor doesn't renew that, what is the policy of the school board following all of these rules in place? How is that going to change things?
We're not, we're not planning on changing the protocol that we're living under right at this point in time. We're going to continue our mask mandates in the schools, cleaning protocol and everything that's in place, that we have in place now.
So I noticed that you did change your pandemic policy, so good for you. But now it says that you're actually following the CDC guidelines or Department of Health and Human Services guidelines. So when the CDC says that teachers don't actually need to be vaccinated to get kids back to school, but then you go against that, aren't you still violating your own policy? Because April 5th is later than March 22nd. I think we all think the kids should be back in school. But it seems to be that it's your opinion that the teachers need to be vaccinated and it's not really based on anything anyone else is saying except your feelings. The CDC says you don't have to be. So shouldn't you be following what the CDC says if you change your pandemic policy to follow the CDC?
Well, the CDC also says we, they require a six foot social, social distancing, which we can't do. So if we follow CDC guidelines, we won't be back until probably September.
Well, Department of Health and Human Services says three feet. So your policy says to either follow one or the other or both.
Right.
So what does the Department of Health and Human Services or the New Hampshire Department of Education say about vaccinating teachers? I think this, I think everyone agrees that the kids can go back to school without vaccinating teachers as a prerequisite.
We felt that the vaccinations were a safety issue and we feel more safe bringing all of the students back in once all the teachers and staff members are vaccinated. It's our decision to make.
But with all due respect, it's not about your feelings. You're not, you're not a physician.
No, we've got, we sat, we sat with Dr. Noble and we sat with Dr. Bernazian from the hospital.
I watched the meeting, I recall.
Well, no, this is a different, this was a.
Oh, this is more recently, yeah.
This is a very recent meeting and their recommendations, again, from a safety standpoint, is that vaccinations are certainly with being out there right now are the, the best way to have, have safety in the school buildings, whether it's required by the CDC or not.
How do you know they're going to be safe?
How do you know?
How do you know the vaccines make people safer?
How do you know they're not?
I'm just asking you, how do you know that they make them safer? I mean, we know that the elderly and obese people actually have a poor uptake and poor immune response to vaccines. So these are our risk groups. I don't see how it's actually making anyone safer. It might make you feel better, but that's not safer. There's a difference.
Well, I'm not going to get into a discussion with you. You know, you're asking a question, that's fine.
So, that's great. Last question. As a matter of procedure for public meetings, you actually need to call the public back into the meeting after you leave non-public session. I'm assuming that you're going to go into non-public session today. And so you actually need to call the public back into the meeting, which the public, just so they know, can wait in the outer room and then be called back in. So you actually, I'm going to ask you to do that tonight. Is to call us back in when, before, when you leave non-public and before you adjourn.
Okay, we can certainly, we can certainly do that. Ordinarily, the procedure, we never, when we go back into a public meeting, it's basically too strictly to adjourn. We almost never, in my 30 years on the board, have discussions after non-public. But if you'd like to wait in the lobby, we'll certainly call you back in so we can adjourn with you in the room.
Well, I'm just concerned because this board seems to have a habit of disregarding procedural rules for public meetings. And I think it needs to stop tonight. So I would appreciate if you would follow the rules.
If you'd like to stay out in the lobby, I'll call you back in when we're ready.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Steve Johnson and I just had a question on the coordinator. Did any instructions or any format come with that award? That of the type of person that they were looking for, for that coordinator? Because as you describe it, the coordinating position needs to be someone that is somewhat skilled in that as well as it should be someone that is skilled in working within a school setting. That's question number one. Question number two would be, it's $100,000 for two years. So is, is the position going to be for like $50,000 for annual salary for one year? Is it going to be 100 for a single year and then you're going to add to it? Is it going to be a permanent position? Many times when we do accept awards, which are nice, it turns into a permanent position that we may or may not need in the future. So those are some questions I had on that position.
Well, first of all, it, it's $100,000 right now for this year. It's a two-year grant, but we do expect that as we develop the activities, we'll be applying for more money. And we have been told that there is money there. I would anticipate that we would have this person for two years. The district really, certainly at this point, I don't know what it will look like in two years, but the district doesn't have the capacity to incorporate this staff member out of the funds that we have, that we raise for permanent staff. So there's no plan or no thought at this point. This is somebody who can get some things off the ground and these things will become systemic in our schools. But I wouldn't expect that this person would be working necessarily directly with children or anything that would require us to sustain the position after we have met our goals over the next two years.
Great. I had one last question. When you post for the position, will you post it in such a fashion as to say, this is not a permanent position? This is one year. So whoever's looking for or applying for that job, understand that it has certain restrictions as far as length of time.
Yes, we will, that would be important.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Tom Bickford and I'm from Wolfboro, New Hampshire. And I'd like to ask that the board and the superintendent improve your communications around the topic of reopening. around the topic of reopening. Back February 8th, you took a vote to, at a target date for reopening, and then there was radio silence. My daughter came home with that rumor. I looked it up on the website. On your website, I couldn't find anything except the board minutes that said you did take this vote. And this isn't a criticism of the vote. But my family falls into probably a small fraction of families. I presume most families sending their kid back to school is not a question. A small number of families, their kids can't come back because of health issues, because of COVID. And my family falls in between. My daughter's health issues may make her more susceptible to the serious symptoms and signs of COVID. So we have to really scramble to figure out what we're going to do. We were happy with the, the hybrid model, and we still are. And I know that may, that's not going to be a possibility when things go full open, but just to see where I'm, trying to show you where I'm coming from. I would have appreciated having more knowledge of what things were going to be going into your considerations as far as coming up with the target date, or if the target date was going to actually be the date. And I would ask you from this point on to please make a greater effort to educate us as parents. We, the superintendent's been very good about sending out an email every time a student or staff member gets sick with COVID. And it would be great if you would take the superintendent's report to you tonight and put that in the form of a memo. And also the discussion that went on, what are the variables that are in place? With the understanding that April 5th is the next target date, but if that, if vaccines are delayed, it may have to be set off. Or I presume if numbers go back up, it may have to be put off. And that would provide us with a lot of important information for those of us who have to weigh what's in the best interest of our children. And if you would do that, I would deeply appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll, we'll certainly try our best.
Tim, I had actually planned to do a letter to parents tomorrow with just the information I think you're seeking.
Okay, anyone else?
My name is Tracy Donovan-Lavallette. I'm from Middleton, New Hampshire. We currently, our two youngest children are in the school system. In our, we have a senior. I'd like to know if the board is going to be discussing graduation, senior banquet, scholarship night, things that last year were missed. And the class of 2021 has lost so much this year. I'm hoping that we move into the direction that we're going to have these events. Will that be at the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely have some, some more information at our next meeting. Again, a lot of this stuff happened very quickly over the last several weeks. So those are all things that I mentioned to the superintendent as well, that, you know, how's the, how's the end of the year going to look? So yes, we'll have some more information for you.
The only other thing I have, so you made the decision tonight to move to April 5th with regards to teachers getting vaccinated. What is the percentage of staff that have signed up for these vaccinations?
Well, as of today, there was 312 or 330 staff members. Some have already been vaccinated within the health, health industries and all that. So I'm not sure what the exact total number is, but the, the large majority of our staff members, bus drivers, support staff, everyone will be vaccinated. Everyone that's registered will be eligible for vaccination on the 22nd or 23rd.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to go into, oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks for waiting for me. Bobby Budman, Wolfboro. I just had a couple comments that I wanted to add, and one question that I wanted to ask. First of all, thank you for approving our children to come back. Yay for vaccines. On the vaccines, I did want to just mention one thing, that if we're going to have them on a Tuesday and Wednesday, 39% of the people do have side effects, slight side effects like headaches or nausea. I don't know if there's a substitute plan in place for that Thursday and Friday. Just wanted to throw that out there. The other thing I wanted to say is, I think it's great, the teachers, I mean, this is, this is excellent, they're getting their vaccines. But most of our children who are coming into school, their parents won't be able to be vaccinated for a few more months, a lot of them. So I think screening is really important. Back in September, I know Kathy, I had spoken to you numerous times about can we start getting thermo programs, computers at the fronts of school to catch temperatures and other things. I know some of our, our grammar schools are really good as the children are coming in the door. They've got the, the scanners checking their temperatures. However, the high school doesn't. And I'm the parent of a high schooler. So I'm wondering what we're going to do about actually increasing our screening for children coming in, if maybe the high school, I don't know how the middle school does it, or the other schools do it. If we can consider screening the children the way some of the grammar schools are doing it, that the children actually are screened as they're coming through the door. Let's see. What's the other thing? Oh, as far as the legislative stuff goes, I'm wondering if the school board can invite our representatives in for a meeting. We have a lot of representatives making decisions for our children at a state level, but we haven't spoken to them. We have no direct contact. And I'm wondering if there's a way to invite John McDonald and Brody Duches and Bill Marsh and all the other representatives who represent our district and have a night with the families where they can answer questions for us. I know Brody Duches just graduated from here a few years ago, so he might be a good person to reach out, just so we can have that exchange and we can ask questions as parents, why they're choosing legislatively the way they are. And then one more quick thing, the youth risk behavior survey, is there a place parents can get that and see that and read that?
That's a good question. There, there must be. Let me look and see if I can find the website for you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, now seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to go into non-public under 91A, semicolon, 3, paragraph 2, for a legal and a personnel matter. A move by Tim. Second by Dr. Jim. Okay, all those in favor, Krista? Julianne? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim? Jim Pittman? Darlene? Dana? And chair votes high, we are now in non-public. Thank you.